Call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Mr. Jeff Sandvik.
... to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sandvik. I'd like to welcome everyone to our work session tonight. I trust everyone's looked over the agenda, concerned agenda and everything. Does anybody have any questions? Any question? All right. Mr. Odom, I guess we'll do recognition on Thursday night. I guess code number nine. I guess Legislative and State Department update from the board perspective. Mr. Blair and Mr. Holliday, they'll give us some reports Thursday night. And any board member that wants to give an update.
Jeff got some different information in calling the states than what we had earlier about the right to participate, so we wanted to make sure that she understood that. Y'all want him to step up and tell you what he found. Jeff, you mind stepping up and kind of tell me what you found that was slightly different? And that way they'll... Which was good news, so...
When y'all approved our 457 plan, at that point, I had been told in a state retirement meeting that our teachers would be limited to 2% in the state's 401K plan. Later, I got ahold of the lady who was the director of that deferred compensation section, and she said, "That is not true." She was not happy that that information was going out. And then the other piece of information, she said she had just gotten a ruling from one of their attorneys that any Board of Ed employee, even not in the hybrid plan, could join the state's 401K plan. But we still would face the issue of keeping up with two plans and the same... with the same limits. So I'm trying to get some answers from the ballot on that.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sandvik. Number 10, Mr. Odom.
Number 10 is a report on the Tennessee School Board Association Scope Conference March 10th. That's Mr. Blair. You gonna do that Thursday night?
I will. One of the students filmed, not in my group, but filmed like 15 minutes of the mock school board. They didn't happen to send it to you, did they, Mr. Evans? Maybe I can find that. But probably as good a participation, as good a debate as I've seen in the years that I've been involved in the program. And I'm hoping that I'm not on YouTube. I spoke to the board in my group as an irate grandparent. So again, I hope I'm not going to see that somewhere. So I think you'd find it comical.
Turned out good and everything?
I think we had 10 of 12 students participate and students from all over the state. So we were at the Student Union Building at MTSU, and the facilities were excellent and had a big crowd from all over the state, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. The debate was fun to watch. A student from each group either had a pro or a con question to debate, and they did exceptionally well. I would not have wanted to debate them.
It's put on by that TSBA organization, isn't it?
They do a very, very good job. And again, I think the board would have been very entertained to have watched these students be in our roles. They prefer that the group leader be the board chairman, but I just thought that kind of took some of the fun out of it. And so in my group, the director of schools, the board chairman, and all the school board members were all students. And then you had half a dozen students or so that would make comments to the board, much like we do here. Again, it was very entertaining, and the students took their roles very seriously. And the director of schools had a tough time, but she defended her recommendation very well against insurmountable odds, if you will. But I thought it was neat. All the... The director of schools was female, the chairman... Madam Chairman was female. And the group leader, if you will, charged with taking our debate leadership was also a female. So girls definitely ruled that day. And maybe that's every day, so...
Right. Number 11.
Number 11 is Local Textbook Adoption Committee. For qualification parameters for appointments to local textbook adoption committees, this is TCA 4962207C, all members appointed on each committee has completed a record of names and qualification form. This form remains in the office of the local director of schools for the six years of adoption. And it's a six-year cycle for each textbook adoption, what they're talking about. It is documented that the board approves the textbook selecting committee and that all are qualified to serve. Recommend approval for the board to approve the record of names and qualification of members of local textbook selecting committees K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. I do not have that list of names still in my version. Do you have those, Ms. Michaels?
Yes.
One of those? Okay. I don't have that list. Can you read it, and we'll go from there, and I'll get it. Who are the names? Go back and get it out of this, and we'll probably get it.
Yours just needs to be refreshed.
I've got it if I can help.
Okay.
Jennifer Seacrest from Stewart's Creek Elementary, Kristy Moore from McFadden, Heather Barker from Smyrna Primary, Natalie Russell from Barfield Elementary, and Dinah Nade from Wilson Elementary. If I'm looking at the right document. All right. Those are the elementary, and then I have middle-level social studies. Charlie Miller from Blackman Middle, Chris George, Christiana Middle, William Popper, Daniel McKee, Alternative Hooper. Thank you. Oh, there we are. Jim Hawkins, Eagleville, Christiana Barnes... I'm sorry, that's Christina hidden. Christina Barnes, Laverne Middle, Marjorie Sudbury, Oakland Middle, Chris Gray, Rock Springs Middle, Katie Patterson, Rock Vale Middle. And middle-level social studies continues. Alan Davis, Segal Middle, Barbara Hoppler, Smyrna Middle, Andrew Prowse, Smyrna West Alternative, Matthew Kovach, Stewart's Creek Middle, Hillary Stevens, Thurman Francis Arts Academy, Crystal Bledsoe, Central Magnet. And the high school level. Natalie McDowell, Blackman High School, William Weiss, Blackman High School, William Hawkins, Blackman High School, Lois Walker, Blackman High School, Michelle Giacobi, Blackman High School, Christopher Young, Blackman High School, Clay Burns, Central Magnet School, Allison Powell, Central Magnet School, Jean Cowart, Central Magnet, William Hooper, Daniel McKee, Alternative, Joseph Crumbie, Laverne High School, Kyle Michelle Mix, Laverne High School, Robert Willis, Laverne High School, Emily Edwards, Laverne High School, Jim Plous, Oakland High School, Kristy Crowell, Riverdale High School, Tim Lane, Riverdale High School, Shirley Watson, Riverdale High School, Tricia Evans, Segal High School, Derek Bowman, Segal High School, Kenneth Mozier, Segal High School, Deborah James, Segal High School, Joseph Clifton Matlock, Segal High School, Eric Shelton, Segal High School, Sharon Cooley, Smyrna High School, Anthony Wolf, Smyrna High School, Kimberly Clemmons, Smyrna High School, Patrick Britt, Smyrna High School, James Coleman, Stewart's Creek High School, Ryan Denton, Stewart's Creek High School.
The reason you have so many in high schools, you have so many separate subjects in social studies. Some of them are AP, some are not AP, so they have subgroups committees within that to select it and bring it back to the whole committee.
Any other comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Odom, how many of each level, I mean, elementary, middle, and high school, how many teachers are in each group? I mean, do we have like 20 per level?
Well, the teachers volunteer for it or select... We try to get at least one from every school or ask them if they volunteer for it, but it's basically, we'd have to count those up. It's about how many, Mr. Evans?
It varies from grade structure. K through 5 has a smaller group because the selection is just a single book for each one of those structures. And middle school has a variety of books that they'll purchase as well, so they have a little bit more community. And then high school is a very large community, but it's probably 70 people.
70 altogether, so how many is... You know, I know you're saying it's grouped by books. Do we have an idea, or is it a floating number of how many are on a committee?
I don't know exactly how to answer your question, but K... Once again, K through 5 has a much smaller number because they don't have that many.
Right. So there's 10 on there? I mean, I'm trying to find out, how many are on a committee?
Yeah, but it's 6, 7, 8, only 20 on the committees.
Only committees. Okay.
The legislature is changing that whole textbook selection. It's working its way through. It's going to pass. It always has passed some committees and all, but there's a whole process that will change soon for next year from the state level down to the local level.
There's only 6 on the elementary committees.
Okay.
Because you're just looking at 6 different grade levels.
Okay.
Let me tell you how kind of that works too, though. When the books come in and they're looking at the books, these people then go back to schools with the books, and other teachers make comments and give feedback. They bring that back into the committee with them. So before it's over, you've probably got several hundred teachers that are such that they've looked at those books to see what they look like and make comments.
As they go through that process, do they have a list of assessment areas that they're ... or key areas?
Well, one of the things they look for is... One of the first things you sit down with kind of what's... What are you trying to cover? What are your standards at the assessment at the end, which would be the TCAP, you know, for most... Or intercourse in the high school, or advanced placement, you know? But you look at those standards and say, "How well does that book cover that set of standards or that skill that you're trying to cover?" There won't hardly be any book that's going to be 100%. I mean, that's just the way it is, because different publishers emphasize different themes, and we talked about that because the textbook publishers or purchases are California, Texas, and Florida in that order, and so they make sure they cover theirs. So teachers then have... Make a list of what skills are not touched well in that book, so that when we roll it out and do training with other teachers, we can say, "This skill is not covered," so that we can kind of address that. But you're looking for an alignment with those standards. You're looking for the assessment piece that goes with it. Of course, we write a lot of our own now. With Think Gate and all, we write a lot of our own formative assessments, what they're called, and we have a district-level benchmark assessment that we send out to do. So teachers know what's on those basically ahead of time, too. But it's a... It's months-long process. They've been at this since around... And don't remember when, start making selections and looking at it, divide it, subgroups up to look at the different books and pros, cons. They ask the publishers to come in and sell their textbook. What you need about... Why should we buy your textbook? What's unique? What do you have in that? So then they're able to compare whether it really lives up to what they say it does or supports and all with that. So that's why you take so long in the process to do it. But it's a lot of money. I mean, we'll spend... Buffett County will spend $2.5 to $4 million a year basically on textbook. Some of that's because of our growth, but in an adoption year especially. So it's important. I mean, it's a critical selection for us.
As we're getting ready for next Monday's meeting with math adoption?
Be a little higher, 6, wouldn't that? Because it goes K-12 now, since they have to take four years of math in the high school.
So I know...
What is the average chef life of a social studies book in high school?
Most of them will last the six years.
Six years is the turnover period, basically.
Six years is the cycle in Tennessee. And I guess before your time, we've researched several times the cost of going to iPad, the textbooks on that. And of course, the one that's probably... Apple came out with some and worked out agreements with textbook publishers, and the price is about $15.95 per year, about $16. You multiply that by 6, and you've got about $96, which is about the price of the textbook. Plus, and the problem issue right now, the reason it hasn't become economical, is because then if you're going to use this as the textbook, then you're going to have to furnish the child with this, the charging units to go with it, and purchase the textbooks, too. So the competitiveness, for whatever reason, is not quite there yet. But I mean, I think it's going there. I think it will be there. It's just we need a good competitive market to make it happen economically. You know, that's the issue. An advantage with a social studies book is, though, that if it's online, then that publisher updates it every year. So if country A becomes country C, which happens in the social studies, the geography, that's like we're seeing in Ukraine and Crimea, then the next version would address that. And so it would really be better than one book that's six years, because you have that ability to change.
It shows there's 6 members on the K-5, 12 members on the 6, 8, and 30 members. These are just teachers. Now, there are other members that are staff members here as well. 30 teachers on the high school, 9, 12. So you're looking at 48 teachers.
When do we expect the recommendation from this committee or these committees back to the board?
April, probably maybe your first meeting or so in April. We're supposed to try to get into the state by around April 15th.
Are these committees aware of the issues that have been raised to the board?
Actually, some of the people that were here in the fall and presented meetings came and made presentations of their findings to the committees. We set aside a time, and they left them with the documentation. I can tell you from middle school, you know, what Ms. Powers told me the other day, that they looked at those and found some of the errors. When they looked at it, it certainly upheld that the errors were there, and actually the teachers have moved in a different direction based on some of the errors that they're seeing. I don't want to speak for them just yet to make that recommendation, but I... They are using them.
I think that it would be very, very important, based on the feedback from our community, that the recommendations come with not only an endorsement of adherence to the curriculum and standards, but also some type of perspective on accuracy, which was really a concern that people in our community raised and by doing so have impacted some pending legislation.
All right. Anybody else on that? Number 12, Mr. Odom.
Number 12 is Special Course Requesting Course. The Instruction Department has requested permission to make application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines, and that's the state rule. Local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 520-1-3-06 on an experimental basis. The Commissioner of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the State Board of Education. After three years, a special course request must be resubmitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. So what you're seeing in this list is probably first year, second year, or third year, somewhere in the cycle. The initial form for first year are a class at Central Magnet, Shakespeare, Writing Lab at Central Magnet, Theatrical Literature Appreciation First Year Request at Smyrna High, Tennessee History First Year Request Stewart's Creek High, and American Sign Language 2 First Year Request Riverdale High. We use that in special education. And Renewal is ACT Prep Second Year at Stewart's Creek High, and Second Year Request at Laverne High. Now, remember, it may reappear because the teacher changed. Like at Stewart's Creek High, we've had ACT Prep for years, but you obviously, when you opened Stewart's Creek High, you had a different teacher. So that's why it starts appearing again. Honors Mythology Second Year Request Blackman High, Introduction to GIS Third Year Request, Central Magnet, and that's the Waterford County's GIS system that do the mapping that you see when we purchase some license to teach that. Foundation of Leadership Third Year Request Smyrna High, AVID, which is a special program, Second Year Request Smyrna High, Honors Organic Chemistry Second Year Request Central Magnet, American Sign Language Second Year Request Riverdale High, Positive Psychology Second Year Request Central Magnet, Native American History Second Year Request Oakland High, Musical Theater Second Year Request Smyrna High, Film as Literature Second Year Request Riverdale High, Survey of Popular American Culture, which is Third Year Request at Laverne High, Strength and Conditioning 1 Second Year Request Stewart's Creek High, Strength and Conditioning 2 Second Year Request Stewart's Creek High Wellness and PE, Strength and Conditioning 3 Second Year Request Stewart's Creek High. It's a new school, and that's been in place for several years also. Our Career and Technical Education Special Courses, initial one is Entrepreneurship Foundation Stewart's Creek High, and that was Nancy Stewart, the application, you know, she received some grants and all for that. And then CTE Renewal, the Megatronics Industrial Technician Class Year Two at Segal High, Laverne High, and Smyrna High, and the Project Lead the Way Biometrical Innovations Year Two at Central Magnet, and Project Lead the Way Medical Intervention, Central Magnet School. We recommend approval, motion to approve, Waterford County making application for new special courses to be offered in the name schools for 2014-15 as presented.
Any questions? Comments?
Just because it was... Just because it was part of the description here, Mr. Odom, if we could have the AVID program as a spotlight on education somewhere in the cycle, it's not a critical, but it is something that Smyrna High School is doing uniquely, and I think it would be important for the board members to see that program.
Rebecca Jones funded a really good amount to start that, and we matched it with some from our district, and it's a little bit of counseling mixed with it to encourage students and all being... It's a national... AVID is a national program, offering in a number of places, but Smyrna really got excited about and is using it. We'll contact them soon. We can do that.
Anybody else? 13, General Discussion. Anybody have anything tonight? Mr. Nerk?
I do. Excuse me. Can you... Mr. Odom, can you refresh my memory on why we don't have more parents on these selection committees for books?
We have used parents in the past. One of the difficulties for parents is knowing how you teach that to kids, how this book presents that. The new state model, the last version I read, it's still up through, all the revisions and possible amendments, did not necessarily place teachers on the committee... Place parents in the community on the committee, but the books will have to be, my understanding, online, and there'll be a period of time for people to make comments, offer feedback and all, dealing with that. So the process is definitely going to be much more open for people to make that input, you know, to those. Typically, it looks like the legislature has said, "We want our professionals to make the ultimate choice," because they deal with it every day, and they've actually been the ones that's having the credentials, the college credentials, to go through and major in that and receive certification to teach that particular subject and all. But it's not a... It's not a reason to hold... You're not trying to keep people from commenting or do that. It's just that the people that's going to use it day by day, every day, and teach it need a heavy say in really, "How do we deliver this? And how well will it work?" Whether it's just based on past experience. But it'll be opened up even more next year, from what I'm seeing.
So it's not a policy of ours, then?
There's not a policy nor a state policy that dealt with that, but there will be some state directives that will come down with this now.
Okay.
The new version.
Anybody else? Mr. Holliday?
When we look at the budget coming up in meetings near the future...
Monday?
There's always this conversation about the percentage that is set aside for capital improvements, part of the budget or specifically set outside the budget. Which way is it presented? I was trying to recall. It is a separate fund from a general purpose school fund. Okay. All right. I heard a report earlier this week about infrastructure investment. And as we have discussed as a board in the past, and we continue to look at, we're certainly blessed to have been supported by our funding body and the community to have put in place the construction that we have over the past decade or so and be as equipped as we are to handle the population that we have. That being said, we have two challenges going forward, as we always have, to keep up with continued increased population, but also to not neglect the properties and the facilities that we have. And I think intentionally, and what was suggested in the report that I was taking note of, was somewhere between 2 and 4% is an appropriate investment for support of existing facilities and infrastructure. And I was curious about, you know, where we might come out there, and maybe that doesn't equate. You know, that was kind of a national thing. It was in the context of roadways and bridges and all of those kind of things. And it was saying that the U.S. is around 2%, Europeans are around 4%, and that somewhere between those two, moving toward 4% maybe is where we need to be. I raise that only to say, you know, when we look at it next week, I'll be sitting over here trying to make that little calculation. If somebody wants to help ahead of time, that would be appreciated.
We're about, is it 5 cents on the tax dollar they give us?
About 4.4.
Okay. They've adjusted a little bit over years, and so we could take the total pennies it takes for us, and that calculation could be done, you know, roughly. Of course, we have some other things built into the general purpose school budget also that deals with repairs. That's the special one. But I think what Gary is telling us, what we saw at Smyrna Primary, and we saw also at Thurman Francis and all, we've got to concentrate on some roofs to finish up some of the old stylus, and some of that we are trying to begin to build into. The budget's going to be better this year. We waited a couple of weeks from when we did last year, and so Jeff has been able to give you... Going to be able to give you more. We'll have Monday, he's going to have some introduction sheets very similar to what we had before, some information for you like that. We've got a summary sheet, and we're also going to provide you with a line item. And what you... And, and what you're going to probably want to do is take the line item home and look at it a while, and then in our second meeting, subsequent meeting, come back, and then at that time, and we did last year, let's just go over it line item by line item, but expect you to, kind of the first time you see it, it's just not reasonable. But you can tell a lot what's happened with the summary sheet.
In a similar report, it was also highlighted that the national debt for student loans has recently surpassed the collective national debt for credit cards. And so over a trillion dollars in student loans is now exceeding the national combined debt in credit cards, and it just highlights what I think is outstanding stewardship on part of this board and the school system with the dual enrollment academy and possibly, you know, at, at least taking advantage of dual enrollment opportunities, if not intentionally transitioning from AP courses to dual enrollment, where we make sure we get that college credit for every one of our students and their families and, and do so at the high school level for those high achieving students and set them on a path where they've already captured some value before they head off to college. I think that that is something that we are certainly leading the way on, and it's something that we should continue to highlight. And as much as I love having the dual enrollment academy at Laverne High School, I, I know that we're going to have to roll it out. There are opportunities that are already being, taken advantage of throughout the county, but even more so because it's so critical that we set our students up not only to succeed in college, but to succeed without the burden of that enormous student loan debt.
That's a loan that you cannot be forgiven unless, well, you're teaching a rule. There's a few special cases, but basically you can't even take bankrupts and get rid of the student loans. It's different.
And with the credit that you can receive from the test from AP, you know, that, that turns out to be, you know, already a dual enrollment.
IB.
IB, and we're, we're blessed to have the opportunity to offer so much to our students.
A bunch of that student loan debt is a result of students who had no real intention of following through that semester. I've also read and listened to some of that reporting, and I think what you're talking about gives an incentive to a student, hey, I've already got a few courses, I can do this work, let me get on with it. I think it approaches it from a very positive point of view, and, and as you said, if that could be expanded, just to touch more people so that they could have that benefit of, you know, what would, six, eight, twelve hours? Wouldn't that be wonderful to begin your college career? So, yeah, that's a great program, and it may help to balance some of the problems that exist in the old way of funding student loans.
And they can use Hope Scholar, if they have a GPA, they can use the Hope Scholarship between their junior and senior year. We have a number that do or take courses in senior year, and it does not impact their total Hope Scholarship. So they get three hundred dollars, I believe, per semester to do that. So we have a number of students that are actually taking, typically, they're online very often, too, that they'll accumulate credits. Personal finance is a big one. We, MTSU is partnering with us on some of those in agriculture and all to do, plus literally at Laverne High, they're actually going to Motlo or the classes are being taught at, at Motlo, you know, at, for Motlo at Laverne High School. So that's really beginning to expand. It'll change dramatically in the next five to 10 years, you see a major shift in that.
On forms that have to be filled out for all of that to qualify for the Hope Scholarship, the counseling staff is doing an excellent job staying up on those things. Just the entire system deserves credit for, for what we're doing in, in capturing that value for families.
Anybody else? Mr. Odom, if you would, would you mind commenting on the governor's visit today?
I would love to do that. Short notice, we received notice around noon yesterday that the governor would like to visit, and I, they, I guess they picked the school, Cedar Grove Elementary School. He was going to do a major tour. He is, he was seeking input from teachers and schools on Common Core, the park assessment, and, and what might be involved. So we were able to pull together. It was originally going to be around one o'clock, but they switched it to eight fifteen this morning. So we had teachers, I guess, from Cedar Grove, Smyrna Elementary, Stewart's Creek Elementary, I think there. We had some of our Common Core coaches, we had teachers that taught in the classroom, you know, to do that. So the governor comes in and sits down and has his pad and all, and you may see little pieces of it, but he did not let the media in, and we were in the library and you're, they were shooting through the windows, so, but you just had those teachers and all around. And Jeff made, I, I could not be more proud of our teachers and what they said and the comments and did, but they were the people who dealt with it every day. They were saying things like, the conversation in the classroom now is like, almost like an adult saying, that the kids are now, as they talk about their problem or solutions to the problem, they're relating it to each other, that type of feedback. Teachers were saying, I've had kids that never did like math, now enjoy math that they, they had not done before because they're being approached in different ways and different learning styles. It was exciting them. But he was taking notes, and he said, this is so, so good what you're saying, you know? And he, Mark Gugli, made, well, at Cedar Grove, you know, our rule is to begin and let's get better. And he said, I'm going to take that one. So he writes that one down, and then another comment or two from the teacher, but his plan was to meet with those teachers and then tour the building, and then he was actually going to Johnson City and I think maybe Lexington or something before today is over. And he said, I, I want to do an audible call here, if it's okay with you teachers, if, and I didn't ask you to do this, or I want your permission, I'd like to bring in the press and let them hear what I am hearing, you know, to do that. And they were fine, there wasn't any problem, they were not shy at all about doing that. So rather than tour the building on his schedule, he brought the whole press in, and I mean, it was about everything in Nashville from public radio to all the major television channels, the print media and all, too. And they set up and filmed, and the teachers, he asked the teachers a few more questions, teachers gave feedback, and then after it was over, the news media were capturing our teachers after the governor's gone and getting additional comments and receiving it from them, but just extremely positive, people that understood the issues around it and were, but were able to say how it was working in the classroom. They had, some of these people, three years into it, Common Core, so they know, they've seen the growth of students and seeing what's happening. I mentioned to the governor that in Rutherford County, we had six hundred plus more students in three through eight, math were proficient last year, and I told him, I'm driven by numbers, data. I mean, if you, if you take those parents and say, is Common Core the right thing? If you ask those six hundred, did their kid move from below proficient to proficient or advanced, what kind of, I mean, they're happy however that, you know? So it is making a difference. So he noted that. He talked somewhat to Amy Patton, principal at Smyrna Elementary, and you know, they're over forty percent ESL, which he was surprised. They're like seventy-eight to seventy-nine percent free reduced, and yet they had over seventy percent of the kids proficient in math. And he was just, he just kept gugling on that about, my goodness, you know, what are you doing? And her statement was, you, you know, one of our thing was the professional learning communities, the PLC, that as teachers learn to teach these skills in math, we group together, we speak with each other. And actually, she told me after it was over and all, said, one of the things that we do, before we actually teach the, the unit or the skills, the teachers meet together and then discuss, how can we best teach this? And like anything else, one teacher may be stronger in this subject area or this particular piece, and another one's a more natural in this one. And so before the students very often see it, the professional learning community has discussed it, what's going to be taught, how can we best teach this, and then review the results when you finish. So like I, as Mr. Zago said, if we could have scripted this, it wouldn't have been any better than today. I think you may see some of it on the nightly news. Of course, they, they chop a lot of it away, you know, and actually they had Representative Sparks on the spot there and said, you've heard this Representative Sparks, they changed your mind? And then, you know, so didn't really get a good answer to that question, but they, the news media was very polite to the teachers and very interested in the process and what they were hearing, so very positive.
Outstanding.
Anybody else? If there's nothing else, we'll see everyone Thursday. We're adjourned.